Harold, can you bring your agenda?
Oh, and he has an elected one. Can we pass it pending his? Well, it'll make difference to their.
No.
Oh, you're up. Oh, I see.
Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' sixth October regular meeting. I would ask that you please silence your cellphones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Reginald Watts from District Three to deliver the invocation, and Vice Chair Commissioner James Dutton from District Two to lead us in the Pledge of the Flag.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, Lord, we just want to thank you, God. Lord, we want to thank you for who you are. And, Lord, right now, we're just asking for your presence, God, for your guidance as we make decisions on behalf of your people. Lord, just give us the Spirit of love, Lord, and let us defeat anything evil. It is in the powerful name of Jesus your people have prayed. Amen, amen, and amen.
And please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number four, Presentation and Proclamation. This week, Spalding County proudly joins communities across the nation in Operation Green Light for Veterans, an initiative led by National Association of Counties to honor the service and sacrifice of our military veterans. From November four through November eleven, we encourage residents, businesses, and organizations to display green lights as a visible symbol of gratitude and support to those who have won our nation's uniform. By shining a green light, we send a clear message. Our veterans are seen, appreciated, and never forgotten. Together, let's light Spalding County green and show our unwavering commitment to those who have served. This time, I'd last the Vice Chair Dutton if you would please read the proclamation.
It'd be my great honor. "By the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, a proclamation recognizing Operation Green Light for veterans in Spalding County. Whereas the residents of Spalding County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Spalding County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in many capacities, including through civic engagement, volunteerism, and leadership. And whereas the National Association of Counties, in partnership with the Association County Commissioners of Georgia, ACCG, and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, has designated the week of November fourth to the eleventh, 2025, as Operation Green Light for veterans, encouraging counties to eliminate buildings in green to show visible support for our veterans. And whereas Spalding County will participate by eliminating the Spalding County Courthouse in green during this period and encourages residents and businesses to join by displaying green lights at their homes and establishments as a symbol of appreciation and support. Now, therefore, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November fourth through eleventh, 2025, as Operation Green Light for Veterans Week in Spalding County, and urges all citizens to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by participating in this initiative. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Spalding County to be affixed this sixth day of October, 2025. Clay Davis, Chair of Board of Commissioners."
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, the second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number two, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize October, 2025, as the International Alpha Delta Kappa Month. This observance celebrates the remarkable contributions of women educators who dedicated their lives to advancing education, fostering cultural understanding, and promoting charitable initiatives. Through the mission of Alpha Delta Kappa, these outstanding professionals exemplify leadership, inclusivity, and service, enriching both personal and professional growth while making a lasting impact on communities locally and globally. This time, I would request that Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Whereas women in education constitute a great portion of the nation's workforce and are constantly striving to serve their communities and nation in educational, cultural, and charitable programs, leading to harmony, happiness, and peace among all people. And whereas goals of Alpha Delta Kappa International Honorary Organization of Women Educators are to honor outstanding women educators, to strengthen the education profession through commitment to diversity and inclusion practices that respect and value each person for their unique qualities, to nurture relationships and networking opportunities, to support altruistic projects, excuse me, grants, and scholarships with time and resources to embrace cultural differences and make an impact through world understanding. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the month of October as International Alpha Kappa Delta Month in Spalding County, Georgia. In witness whereof, Chairman Clay Davis has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the county to be affixed to this document the sixth of October in the year of our Lord, 2025."
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. All right, we're going to do two photos, one right after the other. Let's do the Alpha Delta Kappa first.
You got it.
Bring that one with you. Set it up, we'll grab it. I'm a comment, I'm a comment.
Stand right in the middle here. Someone's going to hold it.
You want to say in the middle, she's the president, I'm the chancellor.
Okay.
You need to get, I'm sorry.
I got two cameras, so let me pick them up. Ready, one, two, three. Second one here. Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yes. All right. Our worship green light, yep. All right.
I'm trying to light this one as well.
We only going to light up the courthouse?
We'll try to light this one as well.
Item number five, citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your comments to the board and not to individual members or the audience. Personal disagreements with individual members or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the members during citizen comments. Outbursts from the citizen, from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend the rule. The three-minute rule is set up on the clock over there when it gets ready to do it. Do we have anybody?
I think she's got it set over here tonight.
Do we have anybody to speak tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two, two people who have signed up this evening. William Borelli or Benelli, please forgive me. Borelli, thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Say your name and address for the record, please.
William Borelli, five nine nine Smoke Road in Griffin.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. First, I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. The, I come before you to discuss the concerns regarding the animal control. At the last meeting, a member, a board member made a comment suggesting that those who have issues with animal control should, and I quote, "get a life." I want to say respectfully that I found that statement very offensive and very disrespectful. Many of us who are speaking up are doing so because we deeply care about this community, our neighbors, and the welfare of the animals in this county. This past week, I had an encounter with animal control and its director. There was a stray dog in Sun City area, and we contacted the animal control. We were told that they would come pick up the animal. However, it had to be dispatched. We attempted to reach animal control ten times. We called Spalding County SO six times. They stated they will send someone out with animal control. Four hours later, no one has showed up. So I took it upon myself to go over there. Maybe they're just really busy or something, I don't know. Look, I took it upon myself, drive over there to speak to them. I spoke with the officer at the desk for about thirty minutes. She said, "Let me get the director, see if we can get someone to help you." The director refused to come out until she had two sworn animal control officers and four Spalding County deputies there. To me, this is very intimidating, you know, very unnecessary, and borderline bullying at this point. She told me the only animals that are prioritized right now is animals that are biting or doing harm to others. I understand that that does happen, yes, I totally understand. However, that's not the only priority. There are other issues that goes on. So I know that animal control has passed its inspections, you know, the last two times for, over the last six weeks or so. For those inspections, though, they focus primarily on cleanliness and facility standards. They don't focus on operational effectiveness or lack thereof or responsiveness to the public, okay? I have also emailed every member of this board several times, or multiple times, I should say, I'm sorry. I have not received a response from anybody. I have not received a phone call, which my number was placed in there, okay, in reference to these issues. So I asked tonight if the board, if the board believes animal control is operating as it should, and if we're being told to, and I quote, "leave them alone," as one of your board members stated to us, then what exactly do you, as the board, recommend the citizens of Spalding County to do with these stray animals, the abandoned animals, the hurt animals that are just dumped off in these neighborhoods? Because on my road, there's tons.
Thank you.
Stefan Paul Hus.
Stefan Paul Hus, two four five Cotton Mill Court, Fayetteville, Georgia. I own a piece of property at Five Witten Avenue. For almost ninety days now, I've been asking Public Works to come fix a pothole that's fourteen feet long, six feet wide, twelve inches deep on Witten Avenue. And I've also asked what's going to happen with the repair of Second Avenue that comes into my property. Both of these roads are the two entrances into my property, and I can't get anybody to come repair them. So is there another avenue that I have to take that up? Also, last week, I was in the planning and zoning, and I've been asking about Article twenty-three and the Mill Village overlay. Some of you board members have been here since previous to 2020. And Article twenty-three states that if there's any zoning changes that are made in order for that to be enacted, they have to be signed and sealed by the board. That hasn't been done since 2020. So I don't know if the zoning commission has talked to you all about that, where we are with that. I've been asking my lawyer to have a meeting for months and months and months, and for some reason, I can't get a meeting. So I guess bringing it out in the open like this is the only avenue that I have to have a meeting. Three minutes to talk with no response. So is, I just need to know that you guys wrote the rule of Article twenty-three. Are you going to abide by it? Or am I just going to keep going down this road with this Mill Village overlay that was never published on a map signed and sealed by the Board of Commissioners? I've, I've heard from, I mean, Mr. Ledbetter's been on the emails since April. Newton's been on the emails since April, and I haven't gotten anywhere with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, no one else has signed up this evening?
Mr. Chairman, the rules specify that we can't ask questions and go back and forth, but we do have time at the very end of the meeting for our comments, right? So that's sort of our response time?
Yes.
Okay.
During your commissioner comments, yes. Item number six, new business. Consider amplification permit for, at forty-five hundred Jackson Road. On October eighteenth, 2025, a party will occur from two PM to ten PM. That's correction, I think, on the thing.
Actually, sir, I think the application is from two PM until eleven PM. They're asking for that full time.
That includes, like, all the cleanup and stuff too, right?
Does that include setup?
It does.
Correct cleanup, yes, sir.
Okay, which includes preparation and cleanup. During our work session, we heard from Mr. Allen, the Community Development Director concerning this application. I think he were going to and couldn't make that session. All right?
Correct. So as you said, this is the Ken Sierra fifteenth birthday party at forty-five hundred Jackson Road. The applicants are here, if you have any questions for them. In talking with them right before the meeting, they originally scheduled this for October eighteenth. They would like to reschedule it for October eleventh, this coming up Saturday, as opposed to the Saturday, the eighteenth. So that's the only note I have about this, that it does include, includes some amplification and microphones and whatnot. And it is from two PM to eleven PM, which includes prep and cleanup.
How many of these have we had at this property in, like, the last year?
None, as far as I know, not since I've been here, since August of last year.
Issues with people, like, essentially operating a event center and not doing all the stuff to make it an event center.
Right, yes.
My knowledge, I don't recall any from this Jackson Road address.
And the staff recommendation?
Approval.
I'd, I'd like to approve it, but I think eleven might be a little too late. That's kind of goes against what we've been doing. What says the board?
We've, we've just been going to ten, and it's Saturday night.
Motion to approve for ten, till ten PM.
Yeah, so amplification.
Amplification.
Permission for amplification.
But you can't have microphones and stuff.
All right, I have a motion from.
Second to the motion to approve amplification from two o'clock to ten PM.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, consideration of approval contract with Piedmont Paving for the construction of INODIC Projects and Volunteer and Ambucks Park Recommendation. So you all are aware, this afternoon at the workshop, we heard Public Works Director TJ Imberger and Grants Manager Larry Wallace concerning these grant projects. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the, no, we're not at La Mig, are we? The contract with Piedmont Paving for the Improving Neighborhood Park Services at Volunteer Park and Ambucks Parks in the amount of eight, what's the total number?
Eight million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
That is my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
This is all state grant money. There wasn't any kind of matching funds from us, right?
There, there are matching funds.
How much, how much is it?
The match is a different percentage for each one of the grants, but the total is five hundred and nine thousand dollars.
So for five hundred and nine, we're getting?
Eight point.
Eight million.
Eight point eight three five million. Eight point eight three five million.
Almost nine million dollars.
Thank you, City of Georgia.
All right, any more questions? Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number three, consider approval of juvenile justice incentive grant contract revision. This afternoon, we heard from the Grants Manager Larry Wallace, who's shared with us all about this grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I feel like this is just a housekeeping move, and so I would like to approve the revised juvenile justice incentive grant contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number four, consider approval of the local maintenance improvement grant, LMEC, award for East McIntosh Road improvements. This afternoon, Public Works Director TJ Imberger shared with us the information on this LMEC. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant for local maintenance and improvement award for the East McIntosh Road improvements.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number six, consider approval of funds for the Regional Griffin Spalding Airport land acquisition. This afternoon at the workshop, we heard from Croy, the engineering firm working at, for the Regional Airport Authority, who shared with us about the reimbursement funds for the land acquisition. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve funds of the R G S A land acquisition from Croy Engineering. Okay, that's not what I wanted my motion to be.
Would you like to start again?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve our portion of the funds to be paid by Spalding County for two point two, a total of two point two million dollars, together with the city of Brooklyn.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, as the representative, one of the representatives on the airport board, this is really going forward. And now that the feds in the state have finally kind of come around, that we're, we're really rocking and rolling now. So this is, I think this is really going to be a great project.
Yep. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number six, consider approval of the grand jury's resolution recommending court bailiff's compensation increase. This afternoon at the workshop, we heard from State Court Judge Josh Thacker about his recommendation for the grand, for the grand jury. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number seven, consider approval to declare vehicles and equipment as surplus. This afternoon at our workshop, we heard from the Public Works Director TJ Imberger, who shared with us the need to surplus this equipment. As an aside, these funds from these cells will be deposited into the general fund balance. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number eight, consider approval of local bridge replacement projects. This afternoon at our workshop, we heard from Public Works Director TJ Imberger, who shared with us concerns of manly road bridge replacement costs of, and G dot request for the county to provide a hundred thousand dollar match for the completion of this project. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
That's a, that's a great bang for about a hundred thousand dollars for a whole bridge.
Yes, and all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number nine, consider approval of restructuring Janet and Swett Roads in Orchard Hill using the T S P L O S funds, as was provided through the twenty twenty-two T S P L O S referendum. This afternoon at the workshop, we heard the Public Works Director TJ Imberger, who shared with us concerns for resurfacing these roads. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve funds for resurfacing of Janet and Swent Road in Orchard Hill.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Five zero, motion carries. Item number ten, consider first reading part seven courts, Superior Court, State Court, Small Claims Court, Magistrate Court, and Probate Court. This, this afternoon at the workshop, we heard the County Attorney Stephanie Wyndham concerning the changes recommended for this ordinance. Do I have a motion? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Motion to table, because I, I believe that Ms. Wyndham stated, Mrs. Wyndham stated that there were some areas that we need to clean up in regards to the Superior Court and State Court.
One second.
Motion to table it until she brings it back to us.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. On the agenda, we have, consider any items from the earlier executive session. I believe there was nothing that needs to be done, so I motion to table.
You don't, there's no action.
Okay, thank you. No action required. Item number seven is a report from the County Manager.
Mr. Chair, I'll make my, my comments brief since we are on the brief train this evening for our Board of Commissioners meeting. This week, I will be away from, from the office, and I will be taking a few days off. This will be the first.
Yeah, yeah, what?
Doing that, I know, right? I do want to share with you, I had the privilege last week, late last week, of attending the ACCG mobile classroom for fifty-four, there were fifty-four, fifty-five of us from across the state that actually had the privilege of attending the classroom that looked at electricity from production all the way through the end user. So first day, we, we met, we went to the training facility in Forsyth for Georgia Transmission. If you've not been there, it is an absolutely beautiful facility where they have a full substation constructed. It's a non-working substation that's constructed, that they teach all of their teams how to be safe, how to work, and how to maneuver around in these areas, and how to actually take care of our electricity. From there, they took us to Shear over at Ogglethorpe Power for their coal burning facility. If you ever have a chance to go and take the elevator all the way to the absolute top of the facility, it is a beautiful location. It's a little over a thousand feet. If you are a little leery of heights, I would not encourage it because it is a grate so you can see through the floor all the way to the ground. So it, it, it really is a beautiful facility. It's amazing how they take good care of us to provide electricity. From there, they took us to Stanton Shoals up near Covington for a thirty acre facility of solar panels. That thirty acres handles five thousand panels. And the way that they keep the facility clean is they have lambs. And they do lambs instead of goats, because the goats will crawl on top of the panels and do damage. The lambs won't. They take care of the grass. But I, I was really impressed by how they do the work for that facility. From there, they took us to an event where Rivian showed off their vehicles. And then the following day, we went to Meta, which is a data center. I was thoroughly impressed with the data center. I took the privilege of standing at their front door at the facility for twenty minutes, just to stand there, to listen to what was going on around us. The first three or four minutes, the gentleman who was blowing off the porch area, that all I could hear was the leaf blower. And then when he cut that off, it was very quiet. There was no humming, no sound from the facility. We were about a hundred and eighty feet, maybe two hundred feet away from the substation. There was no sound from the substation, and that was the second substation that we actually had a chance, working substation that we had a chance to be around. Had the privilege of going inside and taking a look around, just an absolutely beautiful facility. Unfortunately, I'm under a, an N D A, so I can't share with you anymore from that facility. But it was really nice to, to be able to, to take the tour. The following day, we went to Georgia Transmission to their System Operations Center, where they were, they were overseeing every transmission line in the state of Georgia so we could see what facilities were up, what facilities were inoperable at the moment, because they have power outages. Just an amazing opportunity to be a part of that and to be able to see how our communities are, are taken care of every time we flip the light switch that the light comes on. The second point that I would like to make is that ACCG has invited three of us from across the state, just three, to tour the Loudon, Virginia data center facilities, multiple facilities, at the end of October. So I'm looking forward to going and making the comparison between what I saw last week and what I'll see at the end of the month. But one of the things that I did want to share with our board and with our community is that during the, the session, I took the opportunity to ask a myriad of questions. And the way that this board is considering and contemplating how the, the approved data center that you have approved just a couple of months ago is coming in is the industry standard. And what I mean by that is the requirement that you've placed on the data center to be in close proximity to the transmission lines and how you're asking them to do the recycle for water is the, the premier way to bring data centers into your community. And that wasn't just from the EMC or Georgia Transmission, but that was also what Meta looks for when they bring a data center in, is if you are in close proximity to a transmission line, if you have water and sewer availability, and if the, the, the way that it is structured is recycle with very much thinking the way that we think here in our county, which is eco-green. One of the things that I learned from the Meta site was that they, they have a garden on site. And what they produce at their garden, they actually use inside of their kitchen to feed their employees. But it, it was really interesting how they do that. I also asked one final question, which was, can you show me your, your generators? And show me how you've got them structured? So they took us out, showed us the generators. They have them in the Connex boxes, the, the way that they are controlling the noise from the generator to the outside of their neighbors. It's the same way that this board has considered putting the zoning conditions on those who are coming in, in our direction. And I asked them specifically, how many times have you activated your generators? And they say, "We tested them for five or ten minutes a month, and we've not used them at all in the last eight months." So that, that was actually very encouraging to hear that the way that you are considering bringing data centers in is exactly the way that they are looking as the premier way to bring a data center in. So I just wanted to share that with.
That's really good. That's really good.
Yeah, I, I hope everyone's clear that we're not going to allow the disasters that happen elsewhere to happen in Spalding County, like some of the, the Wild West or, or lack of rules that was, you know, Fayette County, Calhoun County, North Georgia. We have definitely learned those lessons and put up these strict rules. So we're definitely not going to allow those kind of mistakes to happen here in Spalding.
Yeah, good.
So thank you for the opportunity to be away.
Yeah, thank you for coming back, having seen one and come back and give us that feedback. All right, report of the Commissioners, District Three, Commissioner Watts.
Yes, sir. County Manager, if you can look into South Pine Hill Road for me, that trash over there, and see what we can do about that. I really appreciate it. And on a lighter note, my son flew in from California yesterday to take the Chick-fil-A during the, yeah, at the senior citizen, they doing the community garden. So we had a good chance to spend with him yesterday, and it was beautiful, so that was great. That's all.
Okay, thank you. District Four, Commissioner Bolden. All right, District One, Commissioner Flowers Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
No.
Okay.
I, I, I do want to speak really briefly. I know we're on the, the short train tonight, apparently. But, you know, we talk, every time there's a millage rate set or a tax rate set or a budget set, people come in and, and want, well, you're not spending enough here. And then we also hear, well, you're taxing us too much. Well, it's actually a triangle, right? I've talked about this before. You have the tax rate at the top, the level of county services, and then that third point is the industrial and commercial base. And no one wants their taxes to be high, including me. We've cut taxes every year except for COVID that I was on the board. But we want our services to be good. We don't want them to be extravagant. You know, we're not here to, you know, repave everybody's driveway and do your roofs for you. But at the same time, we do want crime prevention, we do want good roads, we do want animal shelters. Those things are extremely expensive. You'd be shocked to know how much it costs to repave one mile of road. It's, I, I'm in the wrong business, all right? Law school was a waste. I should have gone into road paving. But in order to pay for those things, we, we simply have to have what Griffin and Spalding used to have, which is industry. Now, we've got some, but our industrial corridor is effectively not being utilized at all. And so bringing in that industry, and every time we say it at a militrate meeting or a budget meeting, everyone goes, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." But those same folks, when it's time, when there's opposition to bringing that industry in, they don't show up. And so all we hear is, "Well, wait a minute, but I moved here ten years ago. I didn't know I was moving into an industrial corridor. That's not fair to me." Well, you moved into the industrial corridor. I'm so sorry that you moved into the industrial corridor, but we're, we're developing it as an, as an industry. That said, I, I drive at least three times a month to McDonough for court. And going up one fifty-five, it, it's like driving through Gotham City. I mean, you just go, what is this industrial, why? It's right there on the road. There is, it's a two-lane road. You know, it's just crazy traffic. We've learned from Clayton County, from Fayette County, from Henry County, from all over, thanks to ACCG, thanks to our amazing county manager, how to prevent industrial wastelands from happening like that. And so we have put in rules here in Spalding County. If you drive from the city limits to the county limit down Arthur K. Bolden, you're going to pass multiple million-square-foot warehouses. You're going to pass industrial sites that are, you know, you could have taken off and landed the, the Kitty Hawk, the, the Wilbur Wright's plane, you know, inside it. And you don't, you don't see them. You don't notice them. You really have to sort of look through the woods and go, oh, they're back. Oh, look at that, there is a whole factory right there. Spalding County has the only green industrial park in the southeastern United States. Like, that's something hugely to be proud of. It's been so successful that the industrial property next door, when they came, they said, "Hey, we want to be held to those same standards so that we can call ourselves green as well." Okay, we'll, we'll zone it with these conditions, so now you have to be green. Well, they're green and it's working. Again, it, those, what, you know, when it comes to things like warehouses, there's a bunch of problems that come with them. Lot of Big Mac trucks, lot of traffic, lot of lights, a lot of noise. But it's the same size and same number of trees get cut down for a data center. But they also generate one-tenth of the tax revenue the data center does, may, maybe one-tenth. Whereas if a data center comes, you, if you can put the proper restrictions in, right? So, hey, you can't make a bunch of noise and disturb your neighbors. Hey, you can't use ten million gallons of water a year. You got to use a recycled internal circulation. We're not going to eminent domain people's backyards so that you can put high tension power lines through it. Here's, here's our rules. And we hold them to it. They'll, you know, they might come and go, can we negotiate? Nope, here's our rules. Take it or leave it. And funny enough, they want to take it, even with our extremely restrictive rules. So how do we get lower taxes, better services? We have a bigger industrial and commercial base. We have an industrial. We have an industrial corridor, we have a brand new airport that's going in. It's just a perfect storm for Spalding County so long as we, the board, make sure to hold them to the high standards that we've made, and I think that we're going to. That's how you get more animal control space, that's how you get a larger shelter for animals. Hey, it's full right now, so we can only do what we're required to do, not the aspirational stuff. But boy, we'd love to build another three million dollar animal shelter so that we can house more, but we don't have three million dollars sitting around. You know, like, this, this isn't Fulton County. So how do you get more of that? You increase the industrial base. The, I probably shouldn't say this, but the, what, what, you went and toured that, that solar farm, and solar farms might work in New Mexico, Arizona, even out in Utah unless they're covered in snow. But only a government could think that chopping down two thousand acres of trees and woodlands and putting up a solar panel farm is somehow a green initiative. That is so ridiculous to me, I, I, I do not understand how you think that that's green. Oh, we're using goats. What? This used to be a forest. Well, we're trying to get carbon out of the air. The trees are going to do that better than the solar panels going to. It, it, it makes no sense to me, which again, is why those aren't even by law and by ordinance allowed to happen in Spalding County. So, we knew that they were looking around for places, and before they even came here, we said, our rules prevent you, you cannot come here and chop down trees to put up a solar farm. Downtown Seattle, they got this big tank of algae, and they're like, hey, we've created this artificial tree, just plant a tree, what are you talking about? Only a government could think this kind of stuff is a good idea, let's spend a zillion dollars to flatten a forest and call it green. Anyway, sorry.
Whoa, Mr. Chairman.
Makes no sense to me.
Okay, I, my brain fart came away. I wanted to, to, to kind of address the gentleman that came up and talked about the I'm fussing at, I'm fussing at us now. I think things are running really well, you know, leisure services is good, the, you know, public works is good, this is good, that's good, the animal control is not good. I cannot say this enough. It is not just a one thing. The thing that we haven't done, that I can see, is that we haven't put more people there to work there. How can they have a strategic plan? They can't, because the director is answering the phone and washing dog cages. And in answer, in response to what the gentleman said, I can understand why you can talk to the director, because these are the same people who have had people following them in their car off duty and making accusations about them and making threats to them. We've even had two people to quit because they were afraid because people in the community followed them around. So, to my knowledge, we have instructed our director not to engage people and to contact the county manager in order to, 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 to lower the risk of anything negative happening. But that doesn't justify anything. I, I have to say that we don't have a, a dog or cat problem, we, we got a people problem.
Yes.
We got sorry people who won't get their pet, their animal spayed and neutered, they care so little for their pets that when they decide they're going to move somewhere else, they just dump the animal off in somebody else's yard.
Or just leave it behind.
And, and, and for me, that's where the work needs to be happening. The enforcement needs to be people going door to door in the county saying, show me that your animal has been to the vet, show me that your animal has met the spay and neuter requirements. Because if we're waiting for stuff to happen, we're never going to get anything. And, and I get it, I mean, I would be upset too if, if there was a dog outside hurt. Now, if it was me, I would just probably ended up fostering it or taking it to the vet, but everybody can't do that. But I know that when I worked at the hospital, if we were like full in the ER, if an ambulance showed up, we had told them they had to go somewhere else, there was just no more room. And I say that to say that when the shelter is completely full, there is just no more room. You know, and so, it's a big problem. And I'm, I'm not happy the way, with the way that we have addressed it, we've given it a lot of lip service, I don't know that we've put enough money behind it to make it, make something happen. I don't know that that's the answer, but the one thing that we haven't done is done that. So, I, I ask us all, I mean, Steve just needs direction from us, but as long as we say you can only have three animal control officers and you got one quitting every month, you are never going to get caught up. You're, you're, you, you want, people want to come in and adopt pets, but if the director's got to stop working to do that because there's not a body there to do that, that is a problem. And regardless of, you know, the shelter being about the animals, we have made a choice to provide some customer service. And what I hear this gentleman saying is, there is no customer service going on, there is only, there's room for who we got, and if anybody goes, there's still an emergency. I don't even know, I know that we have a requirement to keep a space available for dangerous and vicious dogs. I would venture to wonder if that is, is there. So, so, don't know the answer, Steve, but what I'm asking you is to come and tell us what we need to do to, to, to buck up enforcement. We need to stop being, we will respond when you call, and we need to start being proactive. Like I said, we, we can't, we can't punish the animals, we need to, we need to deal with these people. That, that's, that's the problem. The animals aren't dumping themselves, the people are dumping them.
And it's a felony, and it needs to be prosecuted.
And the only way, you know, the only way that's going to happen is if the animal control officer is driving all the way down the street, and God forbid, you'll have to get out, she'll have to get out of their car, but you need to check every household. Do you have a pet? Is it licensed? Where, where are their shot records? Is it spayed and neutered? You got ten days to do it. And then when you come back in six months, what happened to your dog? Yes, where? Let me, give me the name of the people so I can go and check to see if you, to me, that's how we're going to. Now, I know you're looking at me like you're going to jail, but I'm just saying, I want us to do something other than what we've been doing. It's not working. And we're going to continue to have people to come up in the same situation as this gentleman, trying to do a good thing and ended up going home pissed off. For, for reasons that he can't help, and at this point, reasons we can't help. So, that's, that's all my fussing.
Okay.
Oh, we're not supposed to clap, sorry.
All right, I have five things. First, those are the kinds of things that we're talking about when we get ready to have January retreats, bring those ideas together, not just a dog, we'll probably do some stuff between now and then, but we got to think about the long range things that we want to do. We've got to give Steve time to allocate funds and to hire the people to be able to do the thing. So, please think about what we're going to try to accomplish during the retreat next year. Operation Greenlight would request everybody try to get green light at their house. Our veterans did a lot to keep our country free, some of them paid the ultimate sacrifice. So, please try to show the, get the opportunity to get a green light and put it out at your house. We'll have more information published on that, on how to do some of that stuff. November fourth is election time, please, everybody, that's the greatest right you have to see the way the government is going. For the county, it really has to do with the two PSCs and the vote on senior school taxes. Please vote to be able to take care of that. I sat through a session with Steve today with ARC on trails. ARC, Atlanta Regional Commission, thank you, is trying to put all the counties in, in the south into one big set so that trails go along and match up and match up and match up. They're talking about a long-term fix, 2040, to have it done. We need to think through what that looks like. Their idea is to do stuff over on the western sector. For the most part, we don't have a lot of trails planned over there.
Got a bunch of abandoned railroads, though.
And we've got to be able to sit down, so we need to think through, what do we want it to look like? If they're going to come up and try to partner, match up stuff with other counties, we need to think through what that would look like. It was a while back, we've been working on suicides. We were running two or three a weekend, weekend after weekend after weekend. We started and had an opportunity with one of our organizations that Commissioner Watts takes care of, to be able to have a discussion on what suicide is and suicide prevention. We then had an opportunity for Wellstar to do a class, one of the churches, six hundred people are able to see it. And then Commissioner Flowers-Taylor had a session with the county board, for the Board of Health for us, Board of, not Board of Health.
Education.
With the behavioral health, and we brought in a number of people. Keith Point there was, leaders, go back and talk to your folks. School Board then had an issue to be able to go back and review all of their prevention, suicide prevention thoughts and how that works and how they talk to the students and when they call parents and everything. And then we brought in the Suicide Prevention Officer for the state to come in and talk to us, and the head of DBHDD did a video for us to be able to do it. Over the last three weekends, which I expected us to have four, five, or six suicides, we've had one.
Yeah.
That's success. Us getting out and talking to people, leaders leading is the key. So, for all those that are out there, please talk to family members, talk to coworkers, talk to people about, and be prepared to sit and listen and help people. If you don't know what else to do, if you're a government employee, most government employees, most organizations have some kind of an EAP you can get them hooked up with. If nothing else, get them onto 988, which is the Behavioral Health Crisis Line, and they will talk to those people and get them ready to go. We're talking about saving lives of people, our neighbors, and it's really important that we try to do those kinds of things. With that, that's all I have, let me check. Okay. Do I have a?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, we're adjourned, thank you.